Amen. We thank God for being in His house again. This is the last service for today. May God come and bless us. Should, in case none of you have received nothing since morning, there is another chance this evening to receive something from the Lord. May God come and help us, give us open heart, oh, to be able to receive from Him. Amen. We thank God for all our listeners, those that were with us in the morning. This is the revival, you know, service. In this service, there is room for you to ask what you will from the Savior. Amen. Right now, we're going to listen to the orchestration. That's a classical violin duet. And that's titled “When the Rowl Is Called Up Yonder.” When the Rowl Is Called Up Yonder. And this orchestration will be given by the Fulani girls. Amen. After that, we're going to have a choir selection. I just feel like something good is going to happen. Something good will happen this afternoon. Amen. So after that, then we have one or two song services before opening prayer. I just feel like something good is about to happen. I just feel like something good is on its way. He has promised that it'll open all of heaven. And brother, it could happen any day. When God's people come themselves to call on Jesus. As they look to them, they're smiling as they pray. I just feel like something good is about to happen. And brother, this could be that very day. I have learned in all that happened just to praise Him. For I knew His walking through with all my good. Every tear I shed, this world, all the investment. Oh, I know He said me through, He said He would. He has promised, I know He can deliver them. All that things He has in store for those who pray. I just feel like something good is about to happen. And brother, this could be that very day. Yes, I've noticed all the badness in the paper. And it seems like things are applicable every day. But for the chance God is making, it's no different. Because it's about to get better either way. I have never been more thrilled about tomorrow. Sunshine always buzzing through the skies of gray. I just feel like something good is about to happen. And brother, this could be that very day. And sister, this could be that very day. And everybody, this could be that very day. May you experience something wonderful this evening.
Amen.
In the name of Jesus. Please join us wherever you are in this revival service. As we look towards heaven for blessing this evening. 207 will be the opening congressional song. Collected Gospel Song 207. Have you been to Jesus for that cleansing power?
Yes.
Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? Are you fully trusting in His grace this hour? Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? Let's do 1, 2, and 4. 1, 2, and 4 of 207. Have you been to Jesus for that cleansing power? Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? Are you fully trusting in His grace in His heart? Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? Are you washed in the blood? In that so cleansing blood of the Lamb? Are your garments spotted as the white as snow? Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? Are you walking daily by the Savior's side? Are you washing the blood of the Lamb? Though you rest each moment in the crucifix? Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? Are you washed? Are you washed? In the blood? In that so cleansing blood of the Lamb? Are your garments spotted as the white as snow? Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? Lay aside that garment that has stained with sin? And be washed in the blood of the Lamb? That a fine tear flowing for the soul? Oh, be washed in the blood of the Lamb? Are you washed? In the blood? In that so cleansing blood of the Lamb? Are your garments spotted as the white as snow? Are you washed in the blood of the Lamb? Amen. That's our heart desire this evening. And that's our expectation that the blood of Jesus. We wash away every stain.
Amen.
In the name of Jesus. 198 will be our next song. 198. 198. Whether in the church, whether at home, wherever locations you find yourself, God is there. This song says, “God is here and that will bless us.” Even wherever you are this evening, He's there to bless you as well. With the Spirit's quickening power. See the cloud already bending. Wait till drop that grateful shower. May you partake of that shower this evening.
Amen.
Let's sing 198, let's sing 1, 2, and 4. 1, 2, and 4. 1, 2, and 4. God is here. God is here and that will bless us. With the Spirit's quickening power. See the cloud already bending. Wait till drop that grateful shower. Let it come, oh, Lord, we pray. Let a shower of blessing pour. We are waiting, we are waiting. Oh, revive the heart of all. God is here, we feel His presence in this consecrated place. But we need a soon refreshing of His frame of manly green. Let it come, oh, Lord, we pray. Let a shower of blessing pour. We are waiting, we are waiting. Oh, revive the heart of all. Savior, grant the prayer we offer. It's the buffet we bar. From the windows of Thy mercy. For us are a blessing now. Let it come, oh, Lord, we pray. Let a shower of blessing pour. We are waiting, we are waiting. Oh, revive the heart of all. May the Lord revive us this evening. In the name of Jesus. Our prayer song will be 212. 212. 212. 212. Come to the Savior, make no delay. Here in His word, He has shown us the way. Here in our midst. Even at your homes. He's standing today, tenderly saying, “Come.” Joyful, joyful with our meeting be. When from sin our heart appear free. And we shall gather Savior with thee in our eternal home. We're going to sing just one verse. And then we will be led in open prayer. Just verse one. After the introduction, we shall rise to sing just verse one. And followed by the opening prayer. Come to the Savior, make no delay. Here in His word, He has shown us the way. Here in our midst, He's standing today, tenderly saying, “Come.” Joyful, joyful with our meeting be. When from sin our heart appear free. And we shall gather Savior with thee in our eternal home. Heavenly Father, Lord Jesus, we come before you this evening. We come to praise you. We come to thank you. We come to worship you.
Yes.
We come to adore you. Because your mercy endured forever. Heavenly Father, Lord Jesus, you are God. There is none like you. You are the one that doeth as you will in the armies of heaven. Among the inhabitants of the earth. And none can stay your hand or say to you, “What doest thou?” Be thou glorified in Jesus' name. Lord, we have come before you again, one more time. Lord, we have come to hear from you. Heavenly Father, Lord Jesus, make our hearts to good ground.
Amen.
Help us so we can hear from you.
Amen.
Speak to our hearts.
Amen.
And Lord, help us, Lord, to obey when you speak. Heavenly Father, Lord Jesus, we commit the message this evening before you. Lord, that you take over your manservant.
Amen.
That you speak through him.
Amen.
The word we need to hear.
Amen.
Give us the spirit of prayer. Heavenly Father, Lord Jesus, help us to look at ourselves in the mirror of your word. And help us to run to you. Oh, Lord, the rest of this week's revival is before you. Oh, Lord, that you will bless.
Amen.
That even as we are in our homes and tuning this way. Oh, just as you answered the prayer back in the Israelites. Where they opened their windows towards Jerusalem. Oh, Lord Jesus, that as many as would look our way and heaven's way. That, Lord, you will answer their prayer in the name of Jesus. That you will encourage the discouraged.
Amen.
You will heal the sick.
Amen.
Oh, Lord, you will deliver the bound.
Amen.
Oh, you will lift up the broken-hearted. You will provide for the needy.
Amen.
Oh, you will heal, Lord, every kind of diseases. So that we can all go home rejoicing.
Amen.
Lord, that at the end, you will prepare us for heaven. Whatever it will take, Lord Jesus, help us to give it.
Amen.
Oh, Lord, that you will come and you will find us without spot or without wrinkle. Oh, Lord Jesus, because without that, all this will be for nothing. So we ask that you have mercy upon us tonight. Wash us anew with your blood. We'll forever give you all the glory and honor. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen. One more time. We thank God for affording us this opportunity to show up in His house this evening. May He accept our thanks and praises. May He accept our worship tonight. Amen. We have tasked this worship to be, tonight, to be revival. May he come and revive our soul.
Amen.
To revive the soul of those that are at a distance from us. Those that are watching us on YouTube, online, on the internet. Wherever you are, under the sound of our voice. May the Spirit of God come and touch you where you are. Amen. Our announcement remain the same as we offered in the morning. Still, we need to welcome whoever wasn't with us in the morning. And you are here now, this afternoon, listening to us. You are welcome to our services. Send us an email at info@afcoceanside.org. Or follow us at AFC Oceanside. Or call 516-538-6058. Or visit our website at www.afcoceanside.org. This is the last service for today. Scheduled during the week and the next Sunday. Online prayer meeting will be morning shout only. Morning shout only. From Monday through Saturday. 7:00 AM to 7:30 AM. Every morning from Monday through Saturday. Send us your prayer request. That's to prayers@afcoceanside.org. Or call 712-770-5600 with access code 848666 and the pound sign. Monday through Friday, Special Meeting Revival. Will commence 7:30 PM every night. 7:30 PM every night, from Monday through Friday. And as we have, you know, let you know in the morning. We still want to remind you. Some of you may be not familiar with our preachers. Whatever, but those of us that are here, we know that we are familiar with them. Monday night. Monday night, our pastor from Memphis, Tennessee. Reverend Solomon Akinduru will be preaching for us. And on Tuesday, our brother, one of our elders and, you know, the co-founders. When we want to, you know, start this work at Hempstead. That's Brother B.C. Odulaja from Wharton, New Jersey. Will be preaching for us on Tuesday. And on Wednesday, our pastor from East Bridgewater. That's in Massachusetts. Brother Lano Alofe will be preaching, you know, for us on Wednesday. And on Thursday, our pastor from Wharton Church. That's Reverend James Timbila will be preaching for us. Then on Friday, our pastor from our church from Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Reverend Enne Eppen will be preaching for us. On Saturday, there will be concert playback. There will be concert playback on Saturday, 5:00 PM. So we want all of you to tune in so that you can enjoy that concert. Should Jesus start it next Sunday, 9:30 AM in the morning. We're going to have Sunday School. And 11:00 AM, we're going to have Sunday devotional service. And to crown it all, evening, on Sunday, 4:00 PM on Sunday. We're going to have Brother Funsho Ojo preach to us. That's the last, you know, message for this special meeting. May God come and bless us as we listen to all these preachers. And on Sunday morning, Sunday morning, for devotional service. Our brother from Portland, Oregon, Reverend Sam Ajayi. Is going to be, you know, bringing the world from over there. May God give us a good listening air. Amen. On Saturday, there will be Sunday School. Teachers' roundtable conference. That's at 3:00 PM, 3:00 PM on Saturday, June 13. Amen. As we have reminded you in the morning. We want to remind you again that our lesson for next week is on growth. And that's grow as a Christian. Growth. Grow as a Christian. That's what is for our Sunday School next week. And throughout this week, from Monday through Sunday. In our daybreak, we are going to be studying Proverbs 22 through Proverbs 31. Proverbs 22 through Proverbs 31. This Friday, there won't be no Bible study because of our revival. But the following Friday, we're going to have Bible study. And the topic will be the proverb of Solomon. To remind us again, the caption for our special meeting says, “Behold, I will do a new thing.” Now it just brings forth Isaiah 43, verse 19. May God come and bless our soul. After this announcement, we want to go right away into the testimony service. As I've told you before, since we are doing a, it's like a dedication, you know, memorial service. The dedication that we have here. And we want to make sure we factor all those people that helped us to start this work. While we were at Hempstead. We want to factor them in. So tonight, if time permits also, we want to listen to two testimonies. One from Sister Mary Oladile from Atlanta, Georgia. And another one from Brother Banjo Akinyemi from Washington, DC. Oh, you can listen. After that testimony, we're going to have a special, which is a trial. Come unto me. After that special, then our preacher will come to us. Our preacher is one of the co-founder of this branch from Hempstead. And tonight, he will tell us a little bit more about how God have helped them. So that we get to this stage that we are. May God help us. After that, please, you have time in your living room. Wherever you are, to kneel down by your couch there and pray. And pray prayer of faith. Prayer of faith that God should save our children. That God should sanctify them. That God should baptize them with the Spirit. That God will bring the backsliders back home in Jesus' name. Whatever we ask tonight, God is going to answer. We're going to listen to the testimony now.
I thank God for this wonderful opportunity. I see that I owe a high note of praise for all His goodness and mercies to me. While I was in high school in Lagos, Nigeria. I joined the scripture union. And attended scripture union camps during the holidays. Every night after the girls in my room have slept. That was in my high school. I would pray to God very early in the morning also. I would go to one of the tutorial chairs in my high school to pray secretly to God. And during the day, I would read my Bible. My favorite passage was the Salmon on the Mount. And I stuck to Matthew chapters 5, 6, and 7. One night after all my girls have slept. I went on my knees on my bed as usual to talk to God. He gave me an experience that night. My heart was heavy as God reminded me the things I had done to make Him unhappy. I was confessing my sins and shedding tears as I prayed. I told God I wanted to be His child and to be at peace with everybody. Then in a vision, I saw a ladder connecting my pillow to a man above with an open book. I saw another man in the middle pleading and asking that my name be written in the book. I saw my name written in the book. And as I wondered why my name was written down. This rite of God let me know I have become a child of God. I was extremely happy. I told God, if I needed anything, I would come and tell Him. I wouldn't need to go to Mrs. Beckley, the girl's matron, again. As if I have headache or stomach trouble. The next day, I told my friend Funke what had happened to me. She did not understand it. I do not know it is called salvation. But I knew I became a child of God. And each time I needed anything in my high school, I would go secretly to God and He would do it for me. I kept reading my Bible. I kept reading my Bible and praying. I later discovered that I wasn't just reading those chapters, but God started helping me to practice what I was reading. As I read more chapters in Matthew and go to the account of Jesus' sufferings, I would weep a lot. As I read the Bible, this writ of God would stay near me and explain it to me. When I prayed, I would see the light of God shining into my soul and a being sitting on the throne. And even without saying the words, I would know my prayer was already answered. After finishing my high school education and the HSC class, I started working. The devil started tempting me to go into the world and that I could always come back to God. I backslid and realized that this sweet fellowship with God was no longer there. When I prayed, instead of seeing his face, I then saw his back. I started looking for a way back to God. I was at Kutunu, the Republic of Benin. I attended different churches but could not understand their prayer. I told God, I tried to come back to him but could not find my way. I needed him to help me. God sent the apostolic faith members to me as they were preaching about the streets in December of 1970. The devil said I shouldn't listen, for they will only deceive me. I decided to at least hear what they would say. So I stood upstairs at the balcony and listened. One man started speaking my Yoruba language. He said, "God will save you and write your name in the book of life." I connected that to my lost experience. And I ran down to the group telling them I would like to go to church. God used these people for me a lot. They picked me up for church each Sunday, they prayed with me. God restored my salvation. These people took me to the camp meeting in Lagos. And when I got to Lagos, I was surprised to see such a soul-saving station in my own country. And I never knew a barit. God gave me the rest of my Christian experiences. And every day with Jesus has been sweeter than the day before. I thank God I got married in the gospel. God brought my family to the United States of America. He gave us a boy and a girl. And they also got married in the gospel. That was the joy of my soul. God saw all of us through our educational careers. He helped us. He is our God. He showers us with his blessings every day. He fights all our battles. He delivers us from the devil. He heals us when we fall sick. He is our all-in-all. I give God a high note of praise. God brought my loving mother to the gospel. I was in the US, I just sent home to my brother-in-law, Biodum Oladile, and brother, I can't remember the brother's name. Brother Ogundimi is now dead, thank God. But, you know, both of them, they made sure my mom came to Anthony Village. And to cut a long story short, my mother got her three Christian experiences. God made a way for many of my family members to legally come to the United States of America, including my mother. God kept my mother to see and celebrate her centennial birthday, March of this year, early March. God kept family members and friends to attend from far and near. Everyone got back safely to their stations. God allowed us to finish everything we had to do and to get back to our station before the COVID-19 tough rules emerged. I cannot thank God enough for his special love towards me. It would take me forever to tell all that Jesus has done, all that he's doing and all that he will do for me. I want you all to please pray that I will see this Jesus at last, that I will not leave this narrow way, that I will continue with Jesus, myself and my family, my children, my grandchildren. God has been gracious to me. God bless you all.
I give glory to God for the opportunity he has given me to be a part of this service today. I thank the Almighty God for his grace, for his mercy. I thank him for saving my soul. God saved me in 1983, just after high school. I thank him for coming into my life at that moment when I was about to launch out and to start mapping the direction of my life. It was on a Friday at a revival service in one of our churches that I went to for that service. And after the preaching, I went on the altar and God saved me. He later sanctified me and baptized me with the Holy Spirit and fire. I thank him that since then, he changed the story of my life. He has been ordering my step. He has made all things possible in my life. In 1996, he directed my path and brought me to the United States of America. I was in New York with this fellowship in Hempstead at that time. I thank God for all the wonderful things that God has done through the church. I thank God to see how he has enlarged the church and has allowed the church to move on in leaps and bounds. I thank God for the many souls that have been saved, sanctified, and baptized, and for many souls that God has called to their reward. I thank God that while I was in Hempstead in 1996, between 1996 and the year 2000, God provided a wife for me. And today, I have no regrets. I have every cause to thank God. I thank God for the prayer of the people of God and the support that they gave me while I was there. And I thank God that even after I left and relocated with Maryland in the year 2000, for few months, God gave me the grace to be coming and the fellowship with the people of God there in Hempstead periodically. God has been all-in-all for me. He has been my provider, my protector. He has seen me through many challenges. And I can say today, there is no one like him. I have given the balance of my life to him, for him. I want him to help me to steer the course until I see his face in glory. Please pray my strength in the Lord.
Hear the blessed Savior calling thee of prayers. O ye heavenly, come to me and rest. Come no longer tarry, are you low with fear? Bring me everybody, bring me every care. Come unto me, come unto me. I will give you rest. We give you rest. I will give you rest. Take my yoke upon you. Take my yoke upon you. Hear me and be blessed. Hear me and be blessed. I am weak and lonely. I am weak and lonely. Come and trust my might. Come and trust my might. Come oh come. My yoke is easy. Come oh come. My body is light. Are you disappointed, wandering here and there? Dragging chains of doubt and loathing every care? Do you only feel it struggling in your breast? Bring your cares to Jesus, he will give you rest. Come unto me, come unto me. I will give you rest. We give you rest. I will give you rest. Take my yoke upon you. Take my yoke upon you. Hear me and be blessed. Hear me and be blessed. I am weak and lonely. I am weak and lonely. Come and trust my might. Come and trust my might. Come oh come. My yoke is easy. Come oh come. My body is light. Have you by temptations of whom conquer be? Have a sense of weakness brought distress within? Christ will sanctify you if you claim the best. In the Holy Spirit, he will give you rest. Come unto me, come unto me. I will give you rest. We give you rest. I will give you rest. Take my yoke upon you. Take my yoke upon you. Hear me and be blessed. Hear me and be blessed. I am weak and lonely. I am weak and lonely. Come and trust my might. Come and trust my might. Come oh come. My yoke is easy. Come oh come. My body is light.
To God be the glory. And may God bless you wherever you are tonight, especially those of us that are joining from afar off to celebrate this wonderful occasion with us here in Oceanside. May God bless each and every one of us. Congratulations to the Oceanside people. And glory be to God for his keeping hand, for the way he has kept us through the very difficult time that we are currently going through. And I am especially very thankful to God that even in this, this very, very tough time, do you know, God keep our record going. And that record is always amazing to me that we have never, in Oceanside and Hempstead before that, had any mishap with our pregnant women. All of the children, all of the pregnancies in Hempstead, in Oceanside, that the doctor said, "This one will not live." They're the one that play violin for you tonight. Glory be to God. And in this period, when people were, you know, we are pregnant women in this COVID season. And what did God do? God did new thing. God did wonderful thing. Baby inside that you think, "Oh, this baby is going to come with COVID. Oh, the mother is going to die." Oh, this, you know, but God says, "No, no, 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 no." God's record is unbroken. Glory be to God. So we want to just thank God. Glory be to God. You know, the message God gave to me, to give to us tonight, and my prayer is that every one of us will have a little bite out of what God has prepared. And it may not, it may not always be sweet in the mouth. But if you allow the word to travel in, you will notice that it will do your bone good. And it will do your marrow good. And it will do your life good. So turn with me to the book of Revelation tonight, chapter two. Book of Revelation tonight, chapter two. I read from verse one. Unto the angel of the church of Ephesians write, "This thin set he that holdeth the seven stars in his right hand, who walketh in the midst of the seven golden candlesticks, I know thy works and thy labor and thy patience, and how thou canst not bear them which are evil. And thou hast tried them, which say they are apostles and are not, and hast found them liars." Three, "And hast borne and hast patience, and for my name's sake hast labored and hast not fainted." Verse four, "Nevertheless, I have somewhat against thee, because thou hast left thy first love." Five, "Remember therefore, from whence thou art fallen, and repent, and do the first works, or else I will come unto thee quickly and will remove thy candlestick out of his place except thou repent." Six, "But this thou hast, that thou hatest the deeds of the Nicolaitans, which I also hate, he that hath here. Let him hear what the Spirit said unto these churches. To him that overcomeeth, will I give to it of the tree of life, which is in the midst of the paradise of God." May God bless those words. Now, there are so many things to unpack in that, in that writing. This is God. Right into a church that we have heard a lot about, Ephesians. If you know, you know, the book of Ephesians was written by Paul to this same church. And my prayer is that God, our Father, who loves us, who cares that where he's taking us to, we have not been there yet. It's still ahead of us. His concern is that we get there. And because of that, I just beg God that he will not stop talking to us, that he will not come, he will not stop visiting us and revealing to us the things that he doesn't like. Because if we continue to pat ourselves in the back and we are rejoicing all alone and we are in the wrong way, we will not get there. And our own pain will be more than the pain of those who never knew anything about the way. And so we beg God that God will look at the mark in the hand of the Lord Jesus. And because of that, don't stop talking to us. Correct us when we are wrong. Put us in the right way. Help us to follow you, even though the road may be narrow and hard and difficult. Because at the end of it, we shall see our Lord. That's where he went through. We can see his footprint and we can follow him. You see, there are a lot to unpack here, but you know, time will not permit us to do, to do, to do that. So we'll leave it for the rest of all the other ministers that will be coming behind. Maybe they will, God will lead them in some direction. But here's one thing that caught my attention here. Verse six says, "But this thou hast, that thou hatest the deeds of the Nicolaitans, which I also hate." God hates something. And he let, he commanded the church of Ephesians, he let them know some things, you know, that were, but he also, he also take time to mention that there is something that is going on among them that God hates. And we hear quite a number of things in the Bible that God says he hates. So I thought about it and said, "What is the deeds of the Nicolaitans?" The Bible doesn't tell us categorically what these deeds were. And the curiosity in me just says, "Okay, look in the Bible." Try to find out, what is this thing? Because I don't want any part of it. Do you? We don't want any part of it. So as I, as I began to look, the first thing you would look at as a Bible scholar, you know, you just look in the Bible and say Nicolaitans. You know, and the first that came up, there are three places in the Bible that has something like Nicolaitan or Nicolás. Nicolás was in the book of Acts. And please now, now I'm going to have to tender my apology here. Let's make, let me make a very, very brief apology to Brother Nicolás. And you will find that in the book of Acts. So in the book of Acts, chapter six. The book of Acts, chapter six. Just a quick, quick read through, and I can tell you what this was. So verse six, verse five. "And the same pleased the whole multitude, and they chose Stephen, a man full of faith, and of the Holy Ghost, and Philip, and Procurus, and Nicor- and Nico, and Timon, and Phermenas, and Nicolás, a proselyte of Antioch. So here are some things, here are some thoughts for us here. Now, do we remember these people? You remember those people? Those were the people that the church members, the church members in the time of the apostles, when there was wrinkle, when there was problem, and the disciples asked for help. The church members looked around and they identified these people. And they identified them. How? The disciples asked them, they said, "Look ye out among you, seven men of honest report, full of the Holy Ghost." I'm reading verse three of Acts. "Full of the Holy Ghost and wisdom, who we may appoint over this business." So the groundwork was laid out that these people have to be of honest report. They must be filled with the Holy Ghost and they must be filled with wisdom. And here comes one of such people that the people in the congregation could point to was Nicolás. Let me ask you there. Many of you listening out there, you either have been in Emstead or you're, or you know, you started Emstead with us and so on and so forth. Are you a person that the congregation can identify as somebody with these qualities? In other words, if we're not twisting here and there, can they, can they, can people see me and say, this is a man, a man of God? Where you are now, you know that these apostles, all of them, with all these groups, they were all in Jerusalem. But when trouble came, they all scattered and went everywhere. Am I right? You remember? Philip went to Samaria and some other people went this way. And this Nicolás must have gone back to somewhere. So we see that the people who saw him recognized the power of God, the wisdom of God, the feeling of the Holy Ghost upon his life. But the scripture was careful to let us know that he was what? He was a proselyte. And who is that? So I have to ask, who is that? Well, that's a Jew, that's somebody, that's somebody that's not a Jew, but who converted to Judaism. So this must be somebody who was a Gentile, who was a pagan worshiper in the past, and then now he converted to Judaism. But after converting to Judaism, now he met Christianity. And what did he do? He converted to Christianity. Is that a good thing? Yes. And when he got there, did he, did he get, did he fold his hand? If he folded his hand, he would not have been recognized. He did not fold his hand. He got into it. He wanted to know, he wanted to absorb anything, everything that he wanted, he needed. He got it. Maybe he was a vibrant person, maybe he was, he was everything. And he did, and people recognized him and they said, you know, look, if you wanna shoot somebody and you want somebody that is on fire, Nicolás is one of them. May God help us. You know, so many people hop from church to church, right? They hop from this thing to that, to that. But thank God, when you come, if you come to this location and you have been here before, you know, this is real deal. When you get here, you don't have to go anywhere else because you are going to hear the real word of God here, unadulterated, not mixed up, not painted anyhow. Nicolás got that. And he got himself involved. He prayed, he got saved, he got sanctified, he got filled with the Holy Ghost. But thank, you know, I hope you too, you can learn that from Nicolás. No matter where you come from, God is willing and always ready to help and to bless you. Get yourself immersed in what is going on. You know, let people, those people who may be listening to me, you know, thank God for those wonderful testimonies we all do, who have members of our church before and now they are in other places. What we want to be hearing is good news about you. So people will know that where you came from, you got the fire there. And I have to thank God and report back to you that the fire is still at home. If you wanna come home anytime, you have a home you can come to. If anytime, if you, if you find over there that the place is not, it's not what you're looking for and you, and you want a soul that to be refreshed, come home. The home is still on fire. God still answers prayer here. We're not joking. The Lord's still doing great and mighty things in this place. Now, we know you have to be somewhere else. That is the design of God. God wants people in New Jersey, we cannot go there. God wants somebody in Maryland, we cannot go there. And that's why God brought everybody, train them here, send them everywhere. And to God be the glory. And God will still do more. But the story didn't end there, unfortunately, with Nicolás. It looked like, you know, when, when things got hot, when tribulation came, when trouble came to the land and the Roman, the Roman people, the Roman government at that time, they designed a way to make sure that they could catch the Christians. And if you, if you read the book of Acts, chapter 15, verse 29, you see that there was, there was a problem in the regions. And they sent messengers, you know, Paul, Barnabas, they sent them back to the disciples in Jerusalem. And when they conferred, they thought about Jewish something because those people were saying, well, you cannot be really saved. You know, you can't be really saved unless you follow the laws that Moses have put down. So they argued and argued and argued. And when they got to Jerusalem and after these people have already prayed, this was the message they sent back. They sent the message back and said, listen, don't let's bother those people. Because our own Father couldn't survive with Judaism. Don't let's put this burden on them. The only thing is, there is a problem in, among the Gentiles. It came from, it came from Rome. And that problem is the sacrifices that are done to idols. People eat those food. And it was common. And so they wrote to let them know, you don't do that. When you become a Christian, separate yourself from pagan worship. Don't go eat at the table. And the entire book of 1 Corinthians, chapter eight, was written just to address that issue. You can, at your own time, read it. Now, what you read back in Revelation about Nicolaitans was the Roman governor now started to pressure. And if they want to know, if you are a Christian, they will offer something to idol and tell you to eat it. If you say no, now they know you are, you're the one, you're one of those that want to stand aside. And then you can be beheaded. You can be tortured. The historians believe that Nicolás was not able to stand it. And so he started a method of compromise. A method of, don't, we are in Rome. Let's do like the Romans. Yeah. So he started, he started looking back into his history to find something good in paganism that could fit into Christianity. And try to match both of them. But God wasn't happy with it. And do you know, I said, may God help us. All of us are in this. You know, when you take a lead, when somebody, when somebody like that, that people looked at and they pointed him out and said, this one is a good man, let him be a part of it. Don't you know, Mr. Nicolás, that other people are looking at you? You know, I don't know about you. Do you know that there are people who are watching you? Do you know that some, some things, every, every kind of a little deviation of the gospel you may, you may bring, it can become a movement? It can become a movement and it will have your name attached to it. God forbid. You know, you remember that, that king in the, in the, in the land of Israel? When God would describe him, he would, he would use an appellation. He would say, the man that caused Israel to sin. May that not be you. May that not be you. So watch what you do. Watch, watch what you do. Because when you are, when you are a leader, when God puts you somewhere, other people begin to look at you. So you say certain something somehow, you talk somehow, you do certain things. They look at you and in the book of 1 Corinthians, chapter eight, Paul asks, he said, if you, if you go and you sit down and you're eating because, well, your conscience is good, you know, he said, but those who are looking at you, wouldn't they be bold to now say, it is okay to take, to do this, it's okay to do that? That's what God referred to in Revelation. He says, I hate that. People in the church. And God tied it, if you go to, down to, to, you know, we read more, like around verse 15, I believe. So verse, verse 14. This is to another church that have already bought this same doctrine. And God likened it to the doctrine that Belam brought into Israel. So they have the same root. They have the same kind of attitude. They know that, you know, Belam knew that in order to get these people defeated, you gotta get God to work against them. And he introduced flashy things. He called the women, send women to them. When you send women to them, if they go through, God will punish them. And God says now, people who are doing the same thing in the Christian church. And God didn't like it. Unfortunately, it was attached to this name, Nicolás. Now, I told you before, you have to pardon me because the Bible did not say that. It is history that said it. So history may be wrong. History may be wrong. The word of God will always be right. You know, the word of God did say, there are some people who behave, who have a deed of the Nicolaitans. And God says, not once in this passage, I hate it. So it made me to start thinking, what do I do that God hates? And I know, and you'll pardon me, some people are looking at me. Maybe some people look at you too. You know, you may think that I am nobody, nobody knows me in that church. Of course, that's what you think. You know, Nicolás would discover that people noticed him. They knew he was a proselyte. They knew he was filled with the Holy Ghost. They knew he was, he had some wisdom. I don't think they put it on their head, but people noticed it and they pointed him out. That was good. But when he also began to add some other things to the gospel, people noticed it. And what, what did they do? They joined in. And when they joined in, there was an alarm in heaven. And if you go, we don't have time to read, to do so much. But you will see, this thing went on so much that Peter addressed it. Paul addressed it. In the book of, in the book of Ephesians, chapter five, if you begin to read chapter five, you see Paul addressing this thing. Don't let this be mentioned among you. Don't let, don't do this, don't do that, don't do that. In chapter five of Ephesians. But after all, didn't work. Because after, after all those warnings were not taken, the Lord have to step in. The book of Revelation wasn't written until many, many years after all the other books were written. What Paul informed of, read it in chapter five of Ephesians. He warned them in Corinth, these people are the same thing. If you hear about Diana of Ephesus, right? That goddess, they used to worship it. God was not happy with it. They, they wrote a whole lot of warning to the people. They didn't, they didn't yield it. Now I can tell you, history was not kind to Ephesian church. Because eventually, that, that church, that church, the mother of Jesus lived there. John, the disciple that Jesus handed his mother to, he lived there. Timothy was one of their bishops. That was a big church. It was a well-standard church. It was a church that had victory over Diana, the goddess of the Ephesian. But when something small came inside and they allowed it, God himself intervened and said, there are some of you, among you, you have the doctrine of the Nicolaitans, and I hate it. And do you know, is there a church in Ephesus today? Maybe, maybe not. But that church became, because they shifted their focus completely. It started small. But by the end of, the, some, you know, I don't have the dates for you. They were worshiping all the other things. That was where the Holy Mary came from. The worship of Mary, the worship of angels, the worship of, they have completely shifted. And this is why every church, thank God for the apostolic faith today. We have to wash out. We have to be concerned. We have to make sure that our eyes on the ball. As individuals, we have to make sure that we don't bring anything strange. And I'm thankful. If we are rejoicing over anything, it's not because there's a new building. You know, I was, I was asking Brother Shay for, for an atlas and he couldn't find one. Now, now, do you know, do you know, you know, I was actually asking him for a map, not an atlas. But do you know why I was asking for a map? Because I need to show my kids that it's the way to heaven. The map is given here. GPS don't get to heaven. You can not use GPS to get to heaven. You see the place that all our, all our GPS stuff go to? Everyone is beyond that place. This is the only map we have. And from age to age, we better abide by it. We better learn how to read the map. GPS, new things, brand new something, it cannot change the gospel. If we bring them in and we try to use that to change the gospel, it will change us. It will change us, it will not change the gospel. The way of the cross is still the way that leads home. Obedience is still the way that leads home. Love is still the law, is still the law of the gospel. Affection for the people of God is still the law of the gospel. You cannot replace it with anything else. GPS is very, very good, but it only navigates within the earth. If you wanna make it to heaven, you better get the map of God. And you better follow what God says. And you better not, don't bring this other thing and don't bring that other thing. Things that, things that you did not see from the hand of the forefathers, since the things, the foundation members of 1906, they did not pass to us, we cannot come and had it. If we do, we are not gonna be the same gospel. But we want to be the same gospel. We want to be the one that when Jesus will come, it will not find the Nicolaitans among us. It will say, we are one of those people who hate the deeds of the Nicolaitans. And so may God help you tonight. May God, may God put something in your heart to let you know, people are watching you. May God bless you. Let's come to pray. 486 is the song for prayer.
We are going to close by singing from Collected Gospel Song 486. 486, Collected Gospel Song 486 to close this revival service. And in your various locations, you can go down your knees to pray and God will calm down and bless you while you're there.
When you start for the land of heavenly rest, keep close to Jesus all the way. Where you stand, oh, down, up, on the rest. Keep close to Jesus all the way. For He is our guide, and He knows our best. Keep close to Jesus all the way. Keep close to Jesus. Keep close to Jesus. Keep close to Jesus all the way. By day, all, by night, never turn from the right. Keep close to Jesus all the way. Never mind the storms or trials as you go. Keep close to Jesus all the way. Since our comfort and joy for His birth, oh, no. Keep close to Jesus all the way. Keep close to Jesus. Keep close to Jesus. Keep close to Jesus all the way. By day, all, by night, never turn from the right. Keep close to Jesus, oh, for we shall reach our home in heaven by and by. Keep close to Jesus all the way. We are to those we love, we never say goodbye. Keep close to Jesus all the way. Keep close to Jesus. Keep close to Jesus. Keep close to Jesus all the way. By day, all, by night, never turn from the right. Keep close to Jesus all the way. Father, we thank you for this word of admonition you have given unto us this evening. Lord, accept our thanks. Thank you for your spirit. Thank you for the power. Thank you for the unction. Lord, accept our thanks. One more time, your word has come forth to warn us. Oh, Lord, come and deliver us from the seed, oh, Lord, that you hate. Oh, Lord, come and deliver. Send out your power today. Come and liberate. Come and deliver. Come and save. Save tonight. Save tonight. Sanctify. Fill us with your spirit. Fill us with your spirit. Come in a special way in this revival. Come and do a new thing. Come and do a new thing. Let your name be glorified. Thank you for answering our prayers, for praying in Jesus' name. Amen.